I have 7:02 on my phone, so we're gonna go ahead and seven o'clock, we'll call a meeting to order the budget work session. Roll call. Benj?
Present.
Chisman?
Present.
McSparron?
Absent.
Smith?
Present.
Ben Norman?
Present.
Okay, guys, by law, the only city business we can discuss tonight is the budget. We can't get into anything else that's going on. I don't have to say that for Monday. I know Eddieville and some of the other communities around are quite a bit further ahead than us as far as getting their budgets prepared, what have you. Ina's prepared some sheets for you. If we want to, all on the same page here, we'll start with the the beginning estimates for what we potentially have coming in for revenue. The top part there would be what we have basically coming into the general fund, which on the front of your, if you have last year's budget here, be that left-hand column. And that looks like thirty-five thousand. Roughly about forty, forty thousand this year. It's a little bit less I think than we had a year ago.
Mick Parker said we were down about two thousand.
That's, yeah, kinda what it's looking like, so we'll be down. Last year, it did appear that we had forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. This year, I have just a quick estimate there, a hundred. We're looking at about forty-two, so it might even be a little less than that. This one here, beginning estimates, right here. All right, these top four lines.
All good.
Okay. That's gonna get us close to where we're at there. We're a little over forty thousand, probably. When they did the AFR for fiscal year seventeen, that's the one you guys just finished, we were only eight thousand dollars over what they'd led for, eight thousand dollars over on the general fund, correct? That had been projected really bad, but what that didn't reflect for us was the fact that we had an outstanding bill to Chad Lefler that we're picking up for fiscal year eighteen and nineteen. The fire department that we're picking up for fiscal year eighteen and nineteen. Well, there's one more. Paying on the state audit also, which was something that should've been done. Also, sales tax, payroll tax had been paid, which, we're getting caught up on all that stuff now, but that was, I just signed eight thousand dollars worth of checks to get us caught up on sales tax that's going out, but now when we budget for this year, we're gonna stay on top of that and not let it fall behind like it had in the past.
What was penalty on that?
Uh, we'll have to look at all the penalties. The last one had no penalties on it, but we got a lot more water revenue coming in that we haven't been getting, so the sales tax was quite a bit higher there on that last payment. And we'll figure that in here too, as we go along. Proprietary. Now, this is a hundred and forty-eight homes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. A hundred and forty-eight homes, and we took that times sixteen dollars, which is the little more than the minimum, or is that the minimum?
Sixteen is the minimum.
Okay.
So we'll have more, but we have a lot of people don't pay, so we thought it would probably give itself out, but I'm just guessing that amount for a rough start.
So that's our rough estimate on where we are with water, be twenty-eight thousand in revenue, a little over twenty, almost twenty-five. Sewer and sewer fee will be figured off that water as well. So the sewer is about sixteen and a half, sewer fee is seventeen and a quarter. And then garbage, a hundred and forty residential properties that pay for garbage, and that is gonna be about twenty-two thousand dollars.
Garbage is one area that I've been wondering about. I don't know how that rate was set, if it was an agreement with Waste Management, or if it was in ordinance, but we're paying, it's only like about two hundred dollars difference what we're paying and what we're taking in, so when people don't pay, we're basically going in the hole.
There's a city menace, I think, can find it again. They did talk, and I think they did raise garbage rates. I'm trying to remember back when, was thirteen, fourteen? I remember glancing at when I was looking through that stuff.
So again, when we prepare this budget, that's something that we need to look at going forward, possibly as early as Monday. Looking at a rate increase on garbage. I mean, if we're, yeah, if we're looking at going in the hole just when one person doesn't pay, that's unfortunately, that's the world we're, that was the gift we were handing kinda here that we're trying to fix, so. Going down the ICAP grant.
Everybody will work on the surgeon streets, and then it'll be a mess over there, so I don't know how they're gonna work that one out.
So, at the end of the day, our list of revenues there is at the bottom, estimated revenues be just, just under a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
There's a few that I haven't maybe put in there yet, so I might have one on that.
Now, this utility tax replacement is one thing, but we voted to do this franchise fee.
Yes, we have that. I don't think I've.
So any electrical bill, one percent of it, we get now, right?
Right.
And that is.
And the last couple payments, one was eight hundred and one was six hundred and something, so.
And we receive those quarterly, correct? So, yeah, so that's something that's more income we have, helps out a little. We just did, we elected, when you guys elected to do that, the only area was one percent. We could
Raise it.
Raise it to as much as five percent.
I think the reason we stayed with one, we just didn't know where we were. Plus, it's a burden on.
That type of taxes.
We raised it to five when the pitchforks come out. Because in the last month and a half.
Five on the.
In the last month and a half.
It'd be another five percent on your electric bill, yeah, and it would, well, it'd be another four percent because we're already getting one more percent.
See, it's a wash right now. We're getting that, or, well, actually, the the local option sales tax, we didn't get all of that. I think it was something over the jail or something.
Yeah.
So actually.
Ninety-ten, I'm trying to remember.
So actually, we're getting the whole one percent that people are paying on their light bills now, so it's not huge, but it's.
I'd say fifteen hundred dollars, or fifteen hundred dollars for half a year, it gets about three thousand a year, which.
Yeah.
We need to raise garbage and water, but keep raising everything.
Well. Unfortunately, that's, we were handed a not a real good hand. What's the garbage? What's, I don't know what, I, I just paid the bill. I forgot what it even cost me.
It costs you thirteen dollars a month.
Yep, the garbage is thirteen a month.
And we pay sixteen, or one thousand, six hundred and one thousand, sixty-four or something. I forget what the monthly is.
Until I was with her on that, I didn't know we were losing money on.
Water is sixteen dollars for your first thousand gallons, correct? And then.
And we pay three dollars a gallon for it, so a lot of those extra things, they come out of water whenever, instead of out of the other three whenever we have on the bills.
So they're paying, they're paying sixteen dollars for the first thousand gallons.
And then five ninety-five, I think it is for.
Five ninety-five or five ninety-five.
Five, five ninety-five, I think that's what it is. I know it's five something, I'm pretty sure five ninety-five.
Okay. For each additional thousand. And we're getting charged how much per gallon?
Three.
Three dollars?
I raised last July.
From what it was before.
Yeah. So Ray Raffman raised the cost to us last July.
Another thing I didn't put on there is income. We get some money from Raffman for the houses up north of town. They buy that water back from us.
And according to the code, I think they pay a hundred and twenty-five percent. I think that's in the people outside.
Oh, outside.
I think they're supposed to be billed at a hundred.
At a higher rate.
I think that's, I think that's in our code book.
I think that's, it was in there somewhere, because, because it'd be west and north?
North is Raffman.
Cause that's.
Oh, that's ours, we're not west, yeah.
Cause north, that's where that outflow meter was that hadn't been read since two thousand eight, and we got some credit for that.
And we're reading it and reporting it all the time now, so I'm gonna do a quarterly. You can do it as often as you want, but.
You said it's three dollars per?
To purchase the water is three dollars per thousand.
For a thousand, okay.
Sorry, did I?
I saw you said we're already down, and I was starting to do some.
I've been having a whole day.
The sewer, the sewer rate is based on your water rate, or whether your water usage, and it's two-thirds?
Um, it's a flat fee for.
Oh, it's a flat.
Well, no, it's not. It's, it's based on the same usage as the water.
Based on the same usage, and I, for some reason, I always want to say it was.
I've got the numbers that I can get if you want to know.
You wanna grab them real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think we need to, it's just common sense, if it's not.
You're saying it's free.
It's not paying.
Yes, I'm talking the ones that.
And where?
Well, any, anything in the park.
I counted over twenty in the park the other.
We have a. I mean, the talk over, you guys know this.
I'm just, maybe, maybe a piece here, I guess, but, no.
But I'm talking using road use for the ones.
I know, but what I'm concerned about is, and probably in July we'll know, is I I'm sorry, I don't believe the carryover numbers.
Your sewer. Just a minute. The sewer rate, and then we'll come, we'll come back to that, we're gonna get to that here in a minute. The sewer rate is ten dollars and eight cents for your first thousand gallons, and then three ninety-seven for each additional thousand. Yeah.
Three ninety-seven.
Three ninety-seven for each additional thousand, and then you have your flat sewer fee, which is ten dollars and sixty-five cents on each water bill.
Except for the ones that don't have the sewer. We've got just a few that have something.
And those live outside the city limits, because if you're in the city limits, correct? That's not true?
Over here, where some Oskeys used to live, that's in the city limits. And because they didn't wanna go under the railroad track, they.
Allowed them to.
And I think maybe those, some of those others, they're all.
They're all on.
They're all on.
They didn't wanna go through the railroad tracks.
Well, they didn't wanna go to a pumping station either, because it's down low, and they'd have to pump it up the hill to go to.
And that was a big, that was a really big deal a few years back, correct? I mean, that was, I remember that kinda going on, I don't.
Cause you're gonna have to pump it, come out north, but you're gonna have to go to a line and pump it up to Ickery, get on the sewer.
Okay, so what'd you say that was, that you know, this ten oh eight for the first thousand.
First thousand.
Three ninety-seven for.
Each additional thousand.
And then what was the other?
Sewer fees.
Sewer fee.
Sixty-five.
Ten dollars and sixty-five cents every month, that's just, that's a flat, that's a flat fee.
Wasn't that kinda supposed to help pay back this?
It was supposed to get us to where we needed to be to help pay back that loan. Unfortunately, just, it wasn't enough, is what it boils down to. We're going to, Ina's in the process of filling out the, I think it was October, November, I got a form from the Rural Water Association that they said they would help us, give us an idea where our rates needed to be. With our record keeping the past few years being what it has been, we're trying to get that caught up to where we can give them an accurate guess of where we're at, so we can, so then that's something that we are, I mean, in the next six months, probably gonna, I would say, hopefully, as soon as we get that done and get it back, try to get the water rates increased, so that next year, when this June rolls around with the big forty thousand dollar payment, we're not.
Scattering, trying to get that.
Scattering, trying to get it, and.
I think it's being, I know what pulled it out. We were, we were supposed to have an account or fund set up to put that money in for the payment. I think that's, we'll need to get that done, or it probably is done. We need to lay that money back, so it's sitting there every time, December or June, so the money's there, so we can get that check over without sitting around like we're doing now.
Now, if we didn't get implemented as soon as it was supposed to.
I think what they started was that little savings account that we closed.
Right, and just added it all into this.
Yeah, we just took it out and made that interest.
I don't think they're gonna haul us off, but there's, the way I read it, and Jason's looked at it too, there's an agreement we made with the Iowa Finance Authority. The flat says we'll do that.
Yeah, and it didn't get done, so now we make it, we're making up for, trying to catch up, play a little catch-up ball right now. So that's our revenues.
Did we have, what was garbage? John missed that.
Garbage was thirteen dollar flat fee a month. That's also a flat fee, but that, again, said we're at a point where that's not enough.
And a few commercial ones we have don't pay that, they have their own.
Yeah, the Ball Parents pay for their own at the Ball Diamond, so when they have a dumpster out there, that's taken care of by them. Brooklyn's, when they were open, they had their own behind them.
And see, this one's got a dumpster at the manor.
Yeah. And I think, both men, or all three men, or?
It's a dumpster near trucks.
No, this is the only one over here.
All cans. They want, don't wanna go to the dumpsters anyplace else, cause it's being misused the way it is right now.
Misused and abused dumpster, anybody and everybody bringing stuff in there.
No.
Tenants.
Tenants are.
Tenants are abusing them? Okay.
Yeah, but we, we sent letters out last month to some of the tenants that were abusing it.
And that's, that's something we need to include into our budget as we moving forward here, is we definitely have to at least have one cleanup day, if not two, to make up for the one we missed last year, cause there are a lot of, a lot of properties and a lot of people that could use it. They used to do it in June. I don't care when we get it done, but that's something that we need to figure in when we start, start hammering out the budget. So that, basically, that's kinda the general broad overview of what we'll have coming in as far as our revenues go. Our expenses, that'd be this sheet. Three, three pages that are stapled together there. And this is how, when you guys come up to, we have our training session, and Jerry, we've got some forms that we can get you for that, that you can, when we watch the videos that we print it off. These basically are our buckets, how they talked about how everything's got a bucket, that things come in, and these will be what those, what's coming out of those buckets. Like, we'll, we'll just go down each line. Salaries, we've got Gary's salary, he estimates about twenty a week. His one-year review will be coming up in April. So if we give him a raise or anything, that's not necessarily reflected into what she put in here. But at twenty hours a week, at ten bucks an hour, he'd basically be getting ten thousand, four hundred dollars. And that's spread out over, it comes out of the Ball, the Parks Fund. Twenty-five percent of his wages come out of the Parks Fund, the Road Use Fund, the Water Utility, and the Sewer Utility. So he, it's all split up, it'll come out of those buckets.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I think it's on page thirteen in Employee Manual, and I think it, right now, what we're and what we're going by, but it was twenty-some hours in the winter, certain time, and thirty-some.
In the summer. Okay.
And if he worked a full forty, you'd be looking at twenty thousand a year.
Right.
And then, I guess, wages, and then, those are about ten percent of Ipers and.
Well, that comes over under employee benefits.
Okay.
But, um, he hasn't been doing the full twenty. I think I've only seen him have one paper that was forty.
And that's what he said.
This whole year.
From talking to him, he said during the wintertime, where there's not a lot going on, he said he's not gonna take money from the city and just to be doing nothing. He's not gonna, so he's been real good about working with us, like, so what's going on. Doing a really good job, so. So that's just an estimate, again, of twenty hours. I mean, in the summertime, if he is working more, you know, that may get, I can't imagine it being any higher than, than probably fourteen thousand, maybe fifteen at the most.
He's gonna be mowing with a brush cutter or cleaning it and?
Yeah, so he probably will, I mean, the thirty, he'll be pushing the thirty-two, I imagine, every week during the summer.
And we're gonna have more orders there if you, if that's too low, especially if we're gonna give him a raise, do we?
And this is just kind of our first preliminary work session here, so that, that's something that we can, I'll make a note of there. Thirty-two hours in the summer, so when we go to officially put this in the paper, present it to the public, pass it, whatever, that we'll have a little more accurate.
So you're thinking thirty-two?
Thirty-two during the summer, probably from, what do you figure, April to October?
Yeah. Cause, well, it just depends, it'll be start some mowing, that's gonna, that's when these hours are gonna start going up.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it should be close to that.
I'd say April to September, maybe even October, about six months worth of thirty-two hours a week, and then average twenty, basically, the rest of the time. Ina's wages are next, well, after Ipers, Gary's employee benefits is Ipers, Medicare, Social Security, that comes up off that would be not seventeen hundred, but of course, if we're gonna budget more, then that's gonna, obviously, that'll go up, be a little more as well. Ina's rate, thirteen dollars an hour at thirty-two hours a week. As you see, hers is split up just between water and general fund. All the work she does on the waters and the water billing and everything, that pretty good chunk of change comes out of that. And then her Ipers and employee benefits as well, on the line underneath there. And then my wages, which right now, and for the near future, until we get this thing fixed, I will continue to sign my check back over to the city. I've done it with my council wages, both times I have paid from the council, and I'll continue to do so. So that thousand dollars will get plugged back into the general fund until we start operating in black. It's not grandstanding or anything like that, it's just, I think if a lot of the guys in Washington and other places did the same thing, we'd be a lot better off nationwide.
Yeah.
Like I said. They're gonna shut the gun went down.
Right, probably. So you guys, the five of us that are here, or four of you that are here, and Brian, you get thirty-five per meeting, and then your Social Security and Medicare out of there. And see what that's figured in. I know Bob has also been writing his checks back to the city.
What I've been doing is a donation.
A donation, and that's what my.
And I was a little low last year, so I when I got my W two, I realized I was a little low, but continue to do that.
And that's not, like I said, you guys don't have to. I know there was talk about us setting aside a fund for training, and then if we did do that, put it back into the fund, and it'll all go, like, if we had any training or anything we wanted to do, we could do that. Something we can explore as a council at a future date, which some of those cap training sessions are very, very helpful.
Well, I was thinking on that is, if the money wasn't used in six months, it just goes to general fund.
Yeah.
You know, just roll it over to six or a quarter, but then again.
Like I said.
I picked a couple out of pocket, and it hadn't killed me, so.
There's absolutely no pressure on anybody to do that, you guys, I mean, you, you have to deal with the headaches, and if you wanna take that money, then absolutely, more power to you.
Oh, makes me feel powerful seeing them giving the money back.
Yeah. How do you go about giving it back?
Just sign the check back.
If I just sign my check, sign the endorsement check, tell her I wanted to go to the general fund, she asks me a season, says donated to general.
What I'm thinking is, they're gonna back, they're gonna, they're not gonna do the backfill this year, I'm almost sure of it, I can smell it in the legislature. That's gonna be a thousand dollars we're gonna lose if I look right, so we might as well give the money back, we're gonna need it.
But that's, like I said, that's just the next line on that, and we'll get into that as we go forward.
One other thing for Gary there that I didn't put on there is, we give him twenty-five dollars a month for a phone.
Okay.
For using his cell phone.
Is that Gary?
Gary Calvin.
Yeah, Gary and.
And Cheryl gets one too.
Okay.
I think hers will come under the.
The library part. Data Tech, the water billing software. Is that twelve hundred and nineteen? Is that just the license fee we have to pay them every year?
Yes.
Okay. And that's just for software, and three hundred and five of that comes out of the sewer fund?
Uh, we're, because of the big training on sewer and water, I think we've got.
Okay.
Split between each, and I kept it all the way across.
Okay.
It should come over there.
And then we have the Koch Brothers and the copies, is that just, that's the copy machine, correct?
We have a maintenance fee per year, and then right below that, I have a number for copies and stuff.
As you see, that's about eight hundred and fifty dollars, what the two combined with the copies and then.
And our copier, no, we're dealing with wells, so we may have to think about that before we get through the year, but I've got a couple ideas on what might be causing the problems, so I'm looking on this.
I spent two hundred and fifty, or billing forms for the water bills for a year supply, pretty much.
Pretty close to a year, it might be.
Four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
With that last box hole I got, that's what it costs.
Which, that's something that we, we have to have, we have to have that a little bit back. Paper for the copier, two hundred and fifty dollars, that's for a year, that's relatively reasonable, I think. We make a lot of copies, of course, we gotta have papers, packets, and everything else. Postage for the water bills, and the postage and the box memo. I mean, that's, again, stuff you have to have, necessities. Almost a thousand dollars there, nine hundred and fifty bucks. And envelopes, notebooks, pens, miscellaneous, and this is just an estimate of about three hundred dollars. And that again, stuff you have to have. ICAP is our insurance cover, or carrier, correct? And that's what that thirty, four hundred dollars there, out of the general fund.
I think I found the amount here for the.
The workman's comp.
I was still trying to find that.
And that's another number there that's right above the ICAP, that's something that we're gonna have to I don't do a little more research there. Okay, now we're getting down to the, some of the bigger.
Who's under that workman's comp? Is it just Gary?
Gary, Ina.
You guys two, if you're here, it's a hurt.
See, I'm wondering if, like, that snow blade, when we repair that and stuff, is there any reason why somebody like I can't go out and run it a little bit?
You run vehicles, I have to run your license plate to make sure you're okay.
And you run your driver's license, and then, we do have a volunteer program that, with the insurance company.
We kinda let it die on the vine, but that's, they would like us to do that.
And you go down with to Willie and Noel.
It takes, somebody's gotta be you gotta sign a release, that protects you as well as the city. And then somebody needs to be keeping track of who did what on each day, so if somebody gets hurt six months down the road, like, you know, if the injury isn't related to what you did, you know what I'm saying?
Usually, yes, you shouldn't report it like that day. But no, like one of my whole goals is I'm gonna do a little bit, you know, if we can afford some of that patch stuff that we had, I wanna do a little bit of that, putting, filling holes.
And that's what we're, we'll, yeah, figure something out, and I, I think we can get it cheaper.
Just like the trees or that snow blade, I wanna make sure stuff's running right and, and.
And that's what I've got, some of that stuff, and when we get to the, where we're talking about what we're hoping to spend here on.
So, yeah, I kinda wanna get on that insurance or whatever, you know, do whatever we gotta do, because I plan on doing I plan on doing quite a bit, that's how we clean up this town and make a difference.
That'd be, that's what I said, I haven't signed up for that, but when we get together and run down to the insurance company one of these days, and go get everybody, I've been kinda signed up for that.
I think that we can have up to ten people, and I don't know whether to include it, I think the premium's like a hundred dollars, so we can surely break even on that, do a hundred dollars of the work.
Yeah.
I've got some forms and stuff at home, with the package.
And when we get together Monday, if you wanna bring them up, we can get them filled out, get moving that way.
Cause that's what, you know, there's a lot that needs done.
Oh, yeah.
And Gary can't do it all.
Yeah, a lot of hands-on stuff, that's what we were discussing that just a little while ago, so, yeah.
I'm thinking, the big, probably some questions asked with Willie, but I'm thinking that we did that by resolution, but I don't know whether we need to.
Re-up it or something, get it put back on there. Something, what do you think about getting on the agenda for Monday then, is looking into the volunteer program, is that what it would be?
Yeah. Yeah, I talked to the city's attorney a couple of years ago, and their suggestion was to to form a private corporate, or nonprofit corporation. Their suggestion was to do a form of private corporate or nonprofit corporation. And I ran into Jerry Parker and he said, go down and talk to Noel. He said, you should have a volunteer thing on, you know, right or whatever. And it made a lot more sense, you know?
You should be able to do it through the city council, I would think. I don't know, why you couldn't put an insurance thing through the council to, to do, you know, a little more? I mean.
And that's what it-
But, yeah.
Like I say, I think one to ten is one price. And if you get more than ten people in you.
You have to go up.
I think that's what.
I guess we will, uh, we're gonna get what we got sitting here.
I get out, I can't rustle up some other ones, maybe?
You never know, yeah.
Some of them young guys maybe running around town.
You know, one of our best volunteers sitting right there.
Yep, yep. Center of drag.
Yeah, scooter drag.
All right, we'll move on to the, the payment to the fire department. And this just includes what we owe them out of the twelve thousand dollars, correct?
Right.
There, the payment that they receive from us per agreement, the twenty-eighty agreement, uh, the, every way I figured it, I figured it about twenty different ways, it comes up to be about twenty-seven hundred dollars, twenty-seven to twenty-eight hundred dollars added to that number. Because that would be the remaining six payments, seven payments. Six payments, yeah. The remaining six payments of a thousand and seventy. And you've got it there, Bob, I think.
Something there.
I have it on my desk.
Yeah, it's on that. I've got it, I just gotta dig for it.
Six remaining payments of one thousand.
Seventy dollars and seventy-five cents.
Seventy-five cents, that's what that is. We'll have to add what we owe, uh, for the twenty-eighty agreement. It's sixty-five cents per thousand taxable evaluation, which is between twenty-seven and twenty-eight hundred dollars. That'll be added to that. The remaining payments to Chad will also be included in fiscal year twenty nineteen. And we'll still owe him eleven thousand going forward from July through January. Uh, the last payment, it's nineteen hundred dollars for six months. And then one final payment of like sixteen hundred. Uh, sixteen one oh eight, or sixteen oh eight, I believe. Now, the next two are our sewer fund payments, correct? That's what we owe. Uh, if it wasn't quite forty thousand, we've been estimating it as being a forty thousand dollar payment in, uh, in June. It's gonna be more like thirty-four thousand. Yeah, so that one's not, I mean, still it's thirty-four thousand for the next thirty years, but...
Where is that at then?
That's right underneath the left where dirt works, the payment for the SRS sensible.
Twenty-seven one ninety?
Twenty-seven, uh, twenty, twenty-seven thousand and the seventy-one hundred ninety underneath it.
Yeah, and there's the interest then.
And that's the, yeah, that's the interest.
So, yeah, there's, uh, riskles in June or something, and I understand.
Interest for December.
You have interest twice, one in June.
So we got a little bit of a space there to gather.
Big guys in June, but again, I guess I'm gonna really stress this. If that's set up right, the money's laid over in a, in a fund. And when that payment's due, there's a smile on the clerk's face, she writes a check out. And we're not setting up there worrying about it.
And that's why we gotta get, get the water, the Rural Water Association to get that, that done. But we gotta get our numbers right before we can send that off. So it's, just seems like we're getting, we're moving forward, but it's, it's almost baby steps as opposed to the steps we wanna be taking. But we're getting there, we are getting there. Uh, I don't want anybody to get down and think that we're, this is gonna be a long undertaking and it's not gonna get fixed overnight. This is something that we're, we are moving forward and making progress. Uh, phone and internet for city hall would be the next line. Uh, two hundred and forty-one oh two a month, about three thousand dollars there, just shy. Uh, our street lights, and we've talked about, Larry went around and counted them for us the other day. Uh, it's eight hundred and forty-five a month. And I would say, you said over ninety percent of your thought.
Ninety percent have already changed over.
Over to LED again, because that's what I said, they thought if we went to LED, we'd be a little cheaper. Uh, we can have them come in and check them and see which ones aren't. Get them changed over as well. And that saves us a little money anyway, in the long run.
What was your final count on the streetlights?
Thirty-five, I believe. But I started counting, then all of a sudden I started looking, well, this is changed. I should have counted the ones that weren't changed.
Right. And something for another day.
Yeah.
Walking the dog.
Do they do that as, you know, if we just call them to do it? I thought I read on Alliant that as a general rule, when one goes out, they just replace it with an LED.
Right.
But if we could get them to come in and, what they told me at the league, it makes, it makes a difference.
Yeah.
But I think-
They might, they might charge though if you have to do that.
Well, that's what, what Dave, he'd call them in for one out. They'd come in for nothing and change that one. Then Hinchall down there, his wasn't, his wasn't out, but he called it in. And they came in, I think they charged us for special fund, because they checked it and it was working. But they changed it over.
Yeah, so that's one of those ones, I mean, it's something that we, even if we have to call them in and it does cost us for a service call, if they come in and get them all changed and it saves us, I mean, thousands in the long run.
Yeah, or you're spending two hundred dollars the first year, I mean.
Right.
Just so we don't lose money on it.
Right. I mean, that's something that we, we should look into and see how many we do have left to get changed over.
I reckon you know where they are, you can shoot them out and be again.
I know a lot of tape and I'm not saying it.
Alliant Energy, uh, city hall, uh, and it varies, of course, with the heating and air conditioning, depending on how hot COVID is outside. But that's roughly a three thousand dollars a year. Uh, the water, uh, about eight hundred and forty dollars a water a year, so that'd be about seventy dollars a month. Is this, is that correct? Alliant Energy water?
Oh, that's for the water tower, yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's at the water tower, sorry, that's the... And that is paid out of the water, water fund. Moving on to the next page, uh, the ballpark, uh, Alliant Energy, the lights and the electricity out there. They, we have a meeting next Tuesday. Uh, I have it on pretty good authority that the vice president and the secretary and the treasurer all told me they thought they could pick up the, uh, the tab for electricity for us for the next few years until we tell them that we'll go back. There's, they, we signed a twenty-five year agreement about six years ago. Uh, said the city take care of all the water and electricity out there. I'm the president of that group, I'm gonna talk to the other board members. We gotta just get it passed when we, we have our meeting that, that they'll take over paying for the electricity and we'll continue to pay for the water. And I thought that was fair enough, they're trying to help any way they can.
Yeah.
Water repairs, and this is with Michael, uh, with Lathrop Farms, they've come in and helped us out a couple of times already since we approved them to be our, uh, guys to fix that type of thing, um...
I didn't put in a number, I was thinking of an estimate, how many we think we might have? They've been running around two thousand or so.
So the two-
Give or take a little.
Two thousand, Paul.
The one was a really big one, the other one wasn't quite so bad. I guess they've been in three times.
That part is pretty.
Because they had the one over here, they had the one, uh, in front of Donna's house down Main Street.
She was the big one.
And they had the one, that was the big one. Then we had the one in front of the funeral home, which we didn't have to cut up to.
Right, in front of Donna's, yeah.
Well, right out there on the corner, right up.
We're making them there, push fire, I don't know.
Yeah. So they've been in three times, but of course.
Oh, Donna Thompson, my daughter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If we're lucky, well, we're probably gonna have one more, we know. Sewer deal, maybe, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna have, they're gonna dig and look into a sewer that was damaged, uh...
Mike's optimistic that we won't see him very much, so.
Yeah. Mike and Leonard, the guy from, uh, Lavilla that comes in and helps him, come in. And he was really impressed with our quality of water and thought our, he thought we had everything.
When he turned that hider on, he just said, boy, that water's running clear. I mean, that's first things up. And speaking of Leonard, I think we're gonna invite him over occasionally should we figure a little bit of, a little bit toward that. He's, or will he be working for Mike and he'll just be building that?
Later, so we'll be going that way. All right. Hey, later, and he'll pay Leonard. But Leonard is the Lavilla city man, and he comes in and he taught Gary a lot already. And Gary kinda got together and worked. Uh, any knowledge that he can give us, he's been at this for a while. He's very, very good.
He's, he's the guy. Cause he, he does Lavilla and two other small towns, water and sewer.
Now, does anybody have a cam, do they have a camera?
Yes. And that's what he's gonna come down and do with the sewer issue that we have. Can't remember what street that is.
Oh, it's off Hickory.
It's off Hickory, it's going toward the ball battery.
Probably, no.
Right, Railroad Street, yeah. I think that it's on the corner of Hickory, yeah. But he's gonna come in and run the camera there for us and see what we can fix, that it was something that was damaged.
But he was, he was hoping down there, Donna's down there, cause he's just got this new machine that freezes both sides.
Mm-hmm.
Freezes it and then he can fix it and then it falls out, so you don't have to shut the water off. You know, he was telling me to do that curb stops. I never, it took me about twenty minutes for it to sink in. He says, I can't, so I can't shut the water off. And then I have to throw in a boil, boil thing.
Right, because we had a, when we had to shut the water off, we had a mess. I was getting phone calls from the school, because they, they were gonna shut it off. And it ended up only taking them about twenty minutes, but they, it was lunchtime and they didn't want the water shut off during lunch. And then the kids woke up from a nap and we had to make sure the water was on so they could drink the bathroom. And, and so, I mean.
So did they do that for you, same then?
No, they didn't. They went ahead, they waited, they waited to shut it off.
He wants to do it, he says, I've done it two or three times, he says, it's slick.
Yeah.
Yeah, like curb stops, it's, no, they're kinda tough.
Well, he said on the curb stops, I guess maybe we're getting off real quick. It took me a minute, longer than a minute. He said at Lavilla, you owe three or four of them, you know, when he knows they're bad. And then they'll get in, they'll dig down, he freezes them. And then, like, the way I understand it, let's say the valve's open, it's just not working or shutting. He'll freeze that and put another valve on in front of it. He said it's a lot cheaper replacing the whole thing, so.
Something to look into there with money wise, though, means we're gonna have to figure out how many of those. So you've done three, but we had a really warm early winter and then it froze real fast. And that's what Buddy, talking to Buddy Allison, said that causes mains to break and this, so.
The water main's been there's what, sixty-one?
Yeah.
I see where we thought.
And that's what I think we figured out was up here. Uh, waste management charges us nineteen thousand for garbage, a little over almost twenty thousand.
So that's, we raised thirty-three, and get some of that, uh...
Yep, we get some of that back, because that's basically a break even proposition the way it sounds. And if you look at the other one and this one, actually, yeah, we're making about fifteen hundred bucks as all. And like she said, somebody decides not to pay, which, we've taken care of that. Two people that aren't paying right now, we've been sending notices out, we have shut people off. So that revenue hopefully is gonna be a constant come in.
That's working somewhat then?
What's that?
Have to work on somewhat.
I think tough load's been working really well.
Yep, and word got out quickly that, I think that the, we're kinda playing hardball. And so, uh, people that didn't have payment plans made it up to get signed up for payment plans. I think it's going back to there.
As a credit, I'll just say some of them stepped up.
Yeah.
I did appreciate that one person doing.
Nothing included there for cleanup day if you rent dumpsters.
So that would be something that, that we'd have to add on to that, would be like another fifteen hundred for, you know, that dumpster for cleanup day, because we haven't done that, this be.
That's one dumpster or that's three dumpsters?
Well, be about five hundred, Paul. Five hundred, Paul, that's three dumpsters. And there was a big ones, you remember when they did that?
Probably be a little more with dump fees.
My, my first meeting when I was back on the council, then Ju-, July, last year, June or July, they didn't know if we had enough money to bring them in, so we just canceled them last year.
If we're talking volunteers and we have cleanup, I'll throw myself in it. I'm still young, miss Frye. We need to do like they did back in the old days and have some guys go around, just get it on the curb and we'll pick it up and haul it down for you. Cause a lot of people down around here don't have a way to get that stuff and they just don't move it. And if we get, you know, furniture and stuff, it'll be out there if we can pick it up, so.
Yeah, there's probably some of it should go to recycling too, I would guess.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point too.
Yeah. Recycle when things get serious recycled.
Yeah.
Uh, moving on, Rapid Rural Water Association, uh, that's about twenty-four thousand, that'd be our water. Um, uh, what Ina's figures in there, I mean, that's, again, barely breaking even with the, the revenue. Just very, very little over the, well, actually, we're doing that at a loss if you look at the bottom, when you get to the totals there. Uh, because in water, just water alone, it's twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixteen. And you come to the bottom of that, the water utility line, and that's basically thirty-six thousand. So the, we're behind, that's one thing. We'll definitely have to get the rates once we get the, we get it in. Sewer utility, again, uh, looking there, the water sewer testing from Joe Kirkham, that's about sixty-six, sixty-seven thousand, or a hundred a year. Uh, split up between water and sewer with Joe's testing and his sewer testing. The sewer having the bulk of that. Uh, water pollution control, that's three hundred and sixty dollars. And you go down to that line and you see what we're spending in sewer utility at the very bottom of the page there. And we're looking at, uh, fifty-three thousand. You add our two sewer, uh, sewer numbers up in revenue and that's not covering that.
There's some things I get from Keystone Lab too, and I, I think that may have to do with sewer too. Does that sound right?
Yes, yeah.
So I'll look up and see how much that is, because I did not think that that on there.
So again, I mean, you're seeing the shortfall that I'm seeing as well, that, uh, unfortunately, rates on basically everything need to go up. And we can't really budget for that until we get it passed and we find out exactly how much we need to, to be charging. Uh, then you go, keep going further down, we got our League of Cities membership on there for three hundred and twenty dollars. And that's, uh, Anderson Markin does our W-2s, correct? So, I mean, that's something that, uh, publications in the courier, which haven't always been done through the years, that we're doing, again, now like it's supposed to be legally. Uh, and then legal fees, we kinda left those open. So we're gonna have to kinda estimate that, find out what we've used in the last couple of years. Uh, water pollution control, there's another one, was that included twice?
I have it down.
Oh, you have it, okay. So that one, you can kinda take that one three hundred and sixty out of there, because it was on there twice. Uh, cemetery, uh, three hundred and seventy-five each time that that is mowed. But that's something that we've discussed, that if the cemetery board kinda enforces, we'll have to talk to them and enforce some of the rules that they have down there as far as little trinkets and stuff go, then maybe he could do that cheaper for us. We're gonna have to discuss that. Uh, I know the cemetery board's really high on Travis Selix and his lung and landscaping. They says he does a great job. Every time I've been down there, it, when he's, he does a really good job. They would like to retain him if it's entirely possible. Um, I don't know, it's something that we would, I'd have to sit down and meet with Paul of the cemetery board, see if they'd be open to anybody else doing it and if they have to bid that out. Uh, see if somebody could come in cheaper, uh, to help them save money, because when we get to-
Is that what, he just does it ten times or is it?
No, that's an estimate.
That's where it's gonna make the total vary.
Right, I mean, if he does it twice a month for six months, we're looking at twelve times.
What this discussion kinda was, I had with a fellow that I think's awful smart. And I went on Google and everything. I mean, there's blogs for everybody out there, the one, you know, the guys have bid cemeteries, I've read some of their stuff. And it's not so much the size of the cemetery, it's the timing determining for them, on the way they base the charge. And the gentleman I was visiting with, now he threw a number out, maybe it's a little high. If all the stuff, like most cemeteries do, was away from those tombstones, so they could get in there fast and cut, instead of going around everything, maybe he can knock the price down fifty bucks a month, seventy-five a month. But somebody I'll have to visit with him, I guess. And if he says he can do that, they ought to maybe run a little tighter ship down there.
And then we get into library, um, at the bottom, and that's just wages, uh, included in there for the library. The wages- The wages run about twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And as you see there, estimate twelve hours a week for one, estimate for ten hours a week for another one, I mean, we're.
I have received numbers from her, so.
We have, yeah.
Our plan might be different than what I have estimated.
And then their employee benefit also comes out of there as well, uh, the IFRS, Social Security, Medicare. So, that is the end of basically expenditures that we have.
So, we got twelve thousand or expenditures?
Twelve thousand a year.
Twelve, twelve thousand a year is just salary, so. Anything else they do as far as fundraising and donations and everything go?
Am I incorrect on that? That's small city, right?
No.
Okay, so, cause just, I guess to get that, it's not.
Everything funnels through the city, but the county gives the money.
State?
State, city, um, and then all their fundraisers, they do every dinner, every.
Right.
That, that all goes toward.
So, we have been given them, is it like?
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred.
Yep, um.
Went over one year, I checked, it was just about eleven hundred over that one year.
Yeah.
I think that was in sixteen.
There's also that question of carryover after.
They, yes.
They don't want to continue doing that unless it's obvious that it came from other people instead of from us.
They have an agreement, uh, was approved last year, that they would be allowed to carry over anything they went under budget. When something we need to look at, no other group gets that benefit, cemetery doesn't get it.
Of course, they have more fundraisers than most other.
Right, yeah.
I, I think if someone was to retain the money that they.
Fundraise.
They fundraise, you know, what they did, they would like to keep that in their area.
If anything over the forty-five hundred, they could carry over, cause it would be obviously from other people instead of from us.
Maybe that's how that should be rewarded, if we repass that, is anything they have left.
Didn't come from our.
Right, didn't come from allocation.
Cause that, I don't have a problem with that, that's by the way, it should be.
Right.
I mean, other people could get more aggressive if they wanted to, so.
Yeah.
And then they could do that, if they felt like.
And that's, uh, you guys got this sheet, this is where we currently are, uh, this is a snapshot of where we are for fiscal year, um, we're halfway through the year.
Yeah, I don't mean to go backwards, but down at the bottom of that last page, it says, street repairs, derelict houses, and replace the lights with LED, and I understand that, but what's the other?
Those are just things people suggested that we might need.
That we might need to allocate money for.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we haven't, yeah. And that's what she left this map blank, too, in case we come up with anything else.
I think if there needs any lines.
Yeah, we have no lot of lines that we get. But again, like street repairs, that would come out, the derelict houses, that's a project that's gonna need to be tackled at some point, but it's also an expensive project from being on here before. I remember we, we would pick two out every year, just in case we, somebody pushed it real hard legally, and we had to spend a lot of extra money on legal fees and stuff. So, that's something that.
That's for another day, but yeah, there's some houses that need to be cleaned up by the way.
Lot of them, right.
Probably around about, I don't know, five, six thousand a pop now, you might guess we.
That'd be more than that.
Back then, it was two or three thousand, I think.
Do you have a fell basement or something? I bet you're talking some big bucks. I mean, if it's a crawl space house, it'd be considered a cheaper. I think if they own the law, that's something they ought to be doing.
Well, it's probably gonna be the right of tone, it has to go, probably to be willing to condemn and take it.
Well, and that's, I can't remember, I, I'd have to discuss, some of those guys went on the council before, cause I'm, I thought we could, you could put a lien on their property and lien it and make them, I mean, they.
Eventually.
The city paid for it, but it'd come back to us in the long run, but.
Eventually, a state will come up. That's when you get, that's when the lien works.
Yeah, so, food for thought, something to think about moving forward when we, when we address that subject. Okay, but yeah, this is our snapshot so far of where we're at fiscal year twenty eighteen. Right now, year to date, uh, total expenditures is a hundred and eighteen thousand. Basically, a little over that, and what we brought in as far as revenue is a hundred and sixty thousand. You'll look at the water utility, and with the payment plans and with getting some of that money brought in, uh, the water utility is looking really good right now. Uh, they have, we've got a lot of those payments been made. We have the eleven thousand dollar surplus there as opposed to deficit. We spent nineteen thousand, we brought in thirty, but that's just kinda showing you guys catching up how far behind we were and how we're getting caught up. Same thing with the sewer, okay? Sewer utility, uh, brought in eleven thousand more than we spent. Uh, garbage right now, of course, with all that, people getting caught up again, uh, we're ahead on that as well. And the sewer fee has brought us in fourteen, fourteen thousand. So, what you're not seeing in this, that's the first two quarters, is what we've, I mean, we're still generating that revenue, it's still coming in. However, we've got Latrip's two or three water mains that he's fixed, so that's gonna be coming out of the sewer utility, uh, water and sewer funds. So, we were setting pretty good on putting money back for that big payment in June, and now it's, it's kinda getting ate into a little bit. As well as, let's see, moves another one, at the bottom there, you can see each bucket with the, the income and its expense from each one. Uh, general fund, forty-four, yeah.
Forty-four income?
Forty-four, almost forty-five income, and the expense has been nineteen, so. Uh, public safety, because I would assume we paid nothing in the first quarter. That's why that's the deficit that it is, because we're paying it back, the fire department for what we owed them from that township. Money that was given to us by mistake and not put out there.
Isn't the sheriff's bill about thirteen thousand three or four?
Yeah, it's thirty-three hundred per quarter for the sheriff's office, sheriff's department. That wasn't paid, actually, that might be what that is then.
That's what I'm wondering.
Okay, so that's what it was paying, two quarters of that. And the fire department hasn't been included into that, that'll be going forward there. Correct, okay. Uh, the library, as you can see, they haven't got all their money from the different agencies, the state, the county. So, they have spent, spent ninety, almost ten thousand, we brought in their forty-six. So, they're, they're running over budget a little bit. Uh, the cemetery as well, uh, we haven't paid out everything that, so they're running over budget currently.
Usually, they brought in a thousand, well, over a thousand a couple of weeks back, so that brings them back up.
Brings them up to about even then, so.
Can I interrupt a minute?
Yes, sir.
Uh, on the cemetery, uh, it seemed to me like we were getting bills like even in November or December, you know, from some time in the past, and I think last year we budgeted eight thousand for mowing. So, uh, I guess what I'm thinking in the spring, you could possibly get close to a thousand dollars in a, in a month if you had enough rain.
And was all of the eight thousand for mowing, or was that just their overall budget?
That was their overall budget, yeah. And maybe if we get a little better record keeping here than we've had, we can get better, and every year's gonna be different. In the fall, I didn't, there wasn't much mowing went on, was there?
We didn't have much mowings in the summer either, because it was so dry.
I did it in eighty-four, had a good year, it was all buckhorn. I mowed it once a month, cause it was just dry. The next year, it rained every wing speed. I mowed it every weekend.
So, you, you, in the right kinda months, you could, you could burn out a thousand bucks in a month.
But will it come to the point where we can't burn it up?
I got eight hundred and forty dollars for the season to mow that thing with one push mower.
One push mower and one rider.
So, that, that's something we need to, I, I'll have to get in touch with Paul and sit down and talk to him. I mean, as far as, like I said, they love that guy doing it, but three hundred and seventy-five dollars each time is a lot of money. I mean, that's three of them, for us to budget that, I mean, that's.
That, I don't know how to say it, that's, if you went and actually did that a time or two, that might not seem so odd.
Well, no, and I understand that, I understand that, but we're out, we're out in the final.
I understand.
We, we gotta be cutting, I mean.
I don't think any of us like being here talking about grandma's grave and not getting them mowed, but I mean, it's, it's, that's the point. I mean, we're still looking, we really have to get this.
I think you have to put it up for a bit, cause I don't think.
Well, what my ideal rule will happen is we'll sit down and visit with a couple of people, and maybe we'll get lucky and some little changes down there, maybe Selix can, just say, yeah, that'll suit me fine, I can do it, take a number fifty bucks a month cheaper. You know, that's what I'm hoping, whether that'll happen or not, I don't know.
Still, gonna help, help.
Right, but if.
Well, if we get it down to six, or even that.
Six thousand?
Yeah.
But nobody seemed to open a volunteer mowing, that was brought up, and I learned that real fast.
The cemetery board pronged upon that, they said they tried that once, and it was a disaster, and.
Everything from the grass being a quarter of an inch higher on the other side of the road, uh, you name it.
Well, the first time's fun, and then after that, people got other things going on.
No, we did discuss goats at one time, and.
But that's one thing, they did say in here at the one meeting they attended, uh, their last fall, that somebody told them they weren't allowed to do fundraisers, or they shouldn't do fundraisers anymore. I think they're gonna have to bring fundraisers back, they're gonna have to find something that they can do to help raise money. I mean, that's what it boils down to, is I know the library does get after it and raise a lot of money for themselves. Uh, cemetery board, we're gonna have to discuss that with them, cause, uh, I was going through the budget, which we'll go ahead and pull this one up from last year, and this will kinda wrap things up. I mean, we've been at this for a while, and we've discussed just about everything, but if you guys wanna turn to page where we start on the expenditures page, uh, which would be reestimated expenditures, schedule page one, uh, got government activities along the side. I kinda made some notes in the margin on some of it.
Twenty seventeen.
Uh, this would be the twenty seventeen year, yeah, not twenty eighteen. Do we have twenty eighteen?
They're budgeting.
Okay, let's go to that twenty eighteen, uh, which was last year. This year, excuse me, yeah, current year. I was scribbling notes on the wrong page, that's all.
Go to twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, page one of twenty eighteen, uh.
That would've been the budget that was helping us put together for us, wouldn't it?
For last year, yeah.
Yeah, or for this current year that we're on, but for the May, when you guys approved it in May.
And I don't think he had everything that he needed to do that.
Uh, police department, crime prevention on one there, it shows that we get, which we need to do some investigating on what the special revenue, where that comes from, was that local option money, or what that was that helped pay for that?
We did it.
Or is it money from the state or county?
It's through one of the levies, uh, it's split up between debt service and public safety and insurance, and several other things that come on the sheet that comes at the same time when.
But right now, when we figured that up, I don't know what they were spending on, I mean, that comes up to twenty-one thousand dollars. We're spending thirty-three hundred a quarter.
One year, they spent sixty-four thousand.
On police alone?
Public safety.
Public safety, all public safety, or public?
Yeah, I know, well, no, on all public safety, they spent a hundred and three thousand dollars.
Okay, cause right now, everything I'm seeing that shows we're, we're at basically thirteen thousand two hundred, correct, for police?
That was twenty thirteen, if I remember right.
So, that is substantially less than the twenty-one thousand that, so if we, that would save us a lot of money right there. I mean, as far as, we're starting to cut into the budget a little bit. Fire department, last year was budgeted for twenty-one thousand. Uh, we've discussed that already within Aina's sheet with our, where we're paying them back for the, uh, the money that was given to the, if, when you add on what the, between twenty, I think I figured it at twenty-seven hundred, which is what the estimated taxable valuation, the sixty cents, I come up with nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five, which is, again, about ten thousand, eleven thousand less than the twenty-one thousand that was budgeted last year. Bob, are you right, are you on board with that, or is that?
What'd you come up with?
Nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five, and then going forward, it should just be twenty-seven hundred after we get them paid back their money from the Havana township.
Be twenty-seven hundred a year.
A year.
Well, it's pinned on your property valuation.
Right, right, yeah, roughly. It'll fluctuate, but it should, I mean, it would be a whole lot more than that.
Monthly payments, too.
Monthly payments, and that's supposed to go through the county now, to where we won't even, that's going straight out of our property tax money to them. Goes, that would go to the county, and the county will pay them for us, yeah. But we have to include it in here as part of our budget, so it's gotta be budgeted for. So, right there, uh, last year, basically, it looks like forty-two thousand was spent there, or budgeted for there. Uh, we'll have to get the AFR out and see what exactly was, was spent when we move forward with the next budget meeting. But, uh, just a quick figure, I mean, we're looking at twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-five, which is about twenty thousand less. Uh, and that'll be a little relief on the general fund, I would think. Moving on to the public works, roads, bridges, sidewalks, that's all special revenue, none of that comes out of the general fund.
We don't know, though, that, that twenty-eight and that fourteen, we don't, we don't know if they paid other stuff out of that, do we?
Those are supposed to just be the police and fire, that's all they were budgeted for out of those two. I mean, that was, that was what the budget was for. Like I said, when we, when we put the AFR up next to it, and we see what was spent. Of course, this is twenty eighteen, so we won't see that until, we won't see that until June, or July first, we'll, we'll, should have. So, we'll see exactly what was, uh, but the same thing was budgeted the year before, if you look at the one that was two thousand seventeen, everything was the exact same, same numbers were pointed there. Roads, bridges, sidewalks, uh, I would like to see us maybe spend, find out, the patch, when you put the patch in, if we could keep that to about fifteen thousand and then put some back, to see about doing a big project in the next year, starting in on ash trees, starting in on.
Here's what I ran up real quick, and I'm gonna get after me if I'm wrong. Okay, on road use funds, we're gonna need, I'll just run out of about thirteen thousand dollars for street lights, Gary. All right, so there's thirteen, we're gonna budget there. I know for a fact, and I'm gonna assume that for the first two months of this fiscal year, the money we got from road use, for all intents and purposes, is gone, that's before we get some control in here. So, figure, I'm figuring roughly that we're gonna get between twenty-six, twenty-eight thousand this year. So, we're probably gonna have twenty-six to twenty-four actually coming in this year. I don't know about the carryover, I'm worried about it. But if we budget, I didn't wanna go there, if we budget another seven thousand for patch, streets, and let's say we get lucky and there's two or three left over we could tackle an ash tree with, that's still twenty thousand. But if we don't start having carryover, we're never gonna be able to get a crew in here to do some major work on some streets. We gotta start carrying over, I'd say ten thousand a year.
I mean, that's why, right, right now, we can Band-Aid some stuff, but when we really have to get in there and do real, real serious.
I was thinking fifteen like, and then I saw that thirteen number jump out at me, and I thought, it doesn't mean we gotta spend it, it just means, but we gotta start. I thought, it doesn't mean we got to spend it, it just means, but we got to start putting some carryover on that account.
And that's what the street lighting is included underneath there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, you realize we're starting with nothing, that's not our fault, but.
When I figured, I priced it.
It's a slow go.
Right. I priced a ton of the, on the internet, through True Value and fifty-pound bags, I priced a ton of that Easy Street, is what they call it. And we probably get it cheaper delivered, and I think it's the same stuff we had before. True Value will move it for free to Centerville, and it runs eight hundred dollars, but we'd have to go pick it up. And I didn't put sales tax on that, I'm sorry, but, so figure pass is probably going to run around fifteen hundred bucks actually.
And a lot of those from Norris, if I don't know.
I was going to say, do you think it's as good a stuff as you get from Norris?
Well, it might be the same stuff.
Yeah, there's one coming back.
Well, you, that Easy Street, you can get it anyway, you know, the way they advertise, I think it's made up in Canada, that's where it got started being made. But it sounds like the exact, there may be other stuff similar.
Bob, we got ahold of that last year.
Some were, yeah.
Reached out.
Yeah, some were, you know, hopefully in the files, there was a deal that NAP sent us a price list out, you know, last spring, or, we'll look into that and find that.
It's basically the same stuff, but.
And there's, there's two different, you want to make sure you get the kind that doesn't, that stays pliable.
That's, there's two or three of them out there, that's why it's going to be that Easy Street, but figure we're going to, I don't know, we're going to need some gravel. Gary knows what's loaded. Over three, four tons, we had to have across.
Seventeen bucks a ton, probably.
Okay.
And then you have to have a hole, which, maybe rock and potholes doesn't work, and then.
No, I was, there's, I think somebody wants a little gravel put on, I'll call it the trails.
And we are going to have to patch where they did tear up to do the water at some point, that's something else that's another.
You think we could get county to do that, once, I'll, I'll ask them, put it that way.
Because, I mean, it is a county road, but it was a city water, I don't know what we can get.
Well, we're definitely responsible for what goes on underneath it.
But I hope we get a little, maybe we'll get a little sympathy from county, we'll see.
There's a, somewhere, there's a twenty-eighty agreement that was signed quite a while back on these farm-to-market roads, and they pretty well spell out.
Who's responsible for what?
Now, to throw that out, the League of Cities was talking about some kind of change, and I haven't been able to call them and find out what that might, how that might affect our agreement, if they even at all here.
So we are, that line there, and then sixteen thousand in the other public works, I guess I don't know, would that be, not sure what that includes, I guess, so that's something that we, if we can cut into that, then we're still cutting. Then we get down to culture and recreation, library services, it's going to be a hard sell for us as a council, if we're going to ask the cemetery to start working with less, if we don't ask the library to work with less as well. That's, I'd say discussion for the next, next meeting, we can start talking about how much and what we would need to cut. Museum, band, theater, that would be the fifteen hundred dollars there was allocated as the twenty-eighty agreement with the Historical Society, we've got that to where that's two-hundred-and-fifty bucks, so that one, instead of fifteen hundred, we're going to, we can allocate, we can mark that one in and pencil that into two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. They, they re.
Redid that.
Redid that to where, yeah, it's two-hundred-and-fifty as opposed, we were on the hook for fifteen hundred, and they were, agreed to allow, allow us to spread that out over six years instead of one fifteen hundred dollar payment.
It was parks, five thousand was.
That includes Gary's mowing.
Includes Gary.
And then includes Gary's wages, that includes the bull limon, which, like I said, that's going to.
Gas.
That's going to hit it off of.
Gas from mowing. The year prior, you'll see they budgeted three thousand, and then that went up to five thousand, that, for eighteen. You know why, Bob, you were on the council at that time, why we allowed an extra twenty thousand, or an extra two thousand for that?
I'm not sure.
We'll have to look into.
Like I say, this, this budget we're looking at here is what Ted Nelson prepared.
And then again, you see the next line, a couple lines down, you have cemetery for eight thousand, we're going to ask them to take a cut, or probably ask the library to take a cut. Other than culture and recreation, a thousand dollars, we're not exactly sure what that meant either.
Would that be like the corner from the border?
Really, because that's all funded by themselves, that's all privately. Not sure if that was something that would have been.
I think, been two years ago, I'm not, last year, year before, right, this budget.
The budget, this one here that we're looking at with eighteen is the one that was prepared in, by Ted in May, that was approved in May.
But I think the year before, the year, the budget before that, I think this, the council allocated a thousand dollars to the corn crop. They did, and that was, I think. Yeah, there's a couple. I know there's a couple times five hundred when I was looking at the minutes, I mean, they approved it all, but whether they had it in budget or not, I don't know, but.
It's in the budget. It's in the budget, and that's what they had a thousand in the last two. I'm not sure on that, so that's something that we're going to.
We'll just drop that then.
Well, that's kind of my theory on it, we're just putting the line through it, and save us a little more in the general fund there. And then we go to wages, we discussed that previously. From seventeen to eighteen, there was a thousand dollar increase in the budget for attorney fees. City Hall, they actually, I believe we allotted for less. Tort liability is nine thousand, that's pretty much set every year, is budgeted for nine And then we got our clerks' wages in there, city hall and buildings, which city hall and buildings, we decided was going to be quite a bit less than ten thousand, I believe.
Yeah, I think we almost got it paid off.
City Hall's paid off, so now basically all that's coming, needs to be budgeted in there is for heat building, electricity, and water. So, and then mayor's wages, council wages, clerks' wages, we discussed those earlier, we have those on that other sheet, we kind of plug and play with those. That being said, we've got a lot to think about, where you guys kind of think we need to start cutting, what, what line items, what we can budget for different, like library, cemetery, parks, those are things, we kind of got a better grasp on where we're at with police department, for police protection and for fire department. So, we've got some things to think about, some things to look at, where we want to start. We do have to have the budget turned in, finalized, and approved by March fifteenth.
And we have to post the hearing for at least ten days, so we're going to have our work sessions pretty close together.
Yeah, we're going to have to start kind of putting work sessions closer together.
So how do we go about, I think the bigger thing is the water bills and sewer, we raise them costs, how do we go about getting started on that?
I think we do it, we put a public note, a public notice, I think my memory is right, we post a public, we post a public hearing, and then we read it two times.
We have to redo the ordinance.
We have to redo the ordinance. So it'll be a public hearing, and then we redo it, I think we can read it twice to get it done, and really, in a hurry, as far as I'm aware, we can do that within a week.
That's why Ina's been getting a lot of stuff caught up for us, and now that we're getting to where we've kind of have, we can, I think we can maybe get that forward.
I started working on it, part of the problem is the information they want us for the year, the notebook keeping was done, and we tried to catch all up to the end, so we estimated some things that, now I got to figure out what the real amounts are on, like the water and sewer.
Is my memory close without looking for these two gentlemen here and to let everybody know that no, I wasn't going insane the last year or so. If you look down at the bottom of general fund on that twenty-eighteen, you'll see a number, Ted Nelson did this, that shows minus one hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That is called deficit.
And that's.
And that's not as bad this year, because I don't know what miracle happened, it's a little closer to sixty-one or two now.
I think it was more accurate bookkeeping, basically what it boiled down to. We started, beginning fiscal year eighteen, we started fiscal year eighteen with a deficit of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-four. So that, it wasn't as bad as the, it was going to be.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking, we're going to be looking at, but it got better.
But like Ted said, when he met with us in September last year, when the budget was prepared, and it was a budget that he prepared that we had to pass because we were kind of been over barrel, he budgeted for, to spend twenty thousand more than we brought in. We have to start cutting into that, we have to start moving in the other direction, we have to start operating in the black. I mean, there's no if, same, but.
It's pretty disheartening with what the previous city council got done.
When you see that deficit, that's where your road use money.
And that's what she's saying, and Ina's saying, that's where all, basically every dime they had went into, went into the general fund. Now we're, we're having to operate, we are operating by the rules.
The city at one time, in my mind, was technically worse and broke. There was a point in time where if they would have wrote the checks to cover, let's say a lot, and one other one, we'd have been negative, we'd have been busted. Because I had, I had the number given to me, but we actually had an account at that time. If they'd have paid their bills, we wouldn't have had any money.
But that's yesterday, we're moving forward tomorrow, and it's on us, and we're charged with getting this fixed, and.